Okay. You can now call the meeting to order.
Are we really now? Okay, very good. I called in a meeting of June 10, 2020 of the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission to Order. Roll call please.
Chair Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Vice Chair Ron Haberlein.
Here.
Jerry Greenfield.
Here.
Aaron Woods.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Now, please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I lost. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Citizen input. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
There are no members of the public in the audience or on the Zoom call.
Okay, thank you. Consideration of the minutes. Minutes for the last meeting of the Planning Commission of May 13, 2020 were included in the packet. Are there any corrections or additions or changes to the minutes?
I have a question. On page 10 of 17 in the minutes, in the step, bold and point. No, it's just below the, it's in the middle of the page. Commissioner Greenfield, the city adopted a resolution a couple of years ago on inclusion. That's where, though reflected in the plan, it might not be the best place to do so. I'm not sure what that means, and it doesn't resonate with anything that I thought I said. He believed the city did adopt a resolution for equity. I don't think I said that. I certainly did not believe it. The, I clearly remember that the resolution was on inclusion. Wilsonville is an inclusive community. I believe that's what the resolution was for. I don't, I don't disagree with the idea of equity at all, but I don't think that's what the resolution addressed by name.
So how would you propose to correct that sentence, Jerry?
The city did adopt a resolution for inclusion, as in that Wilsonville is an inclusionary community.
Okay.
Somebody can check that. It's a matter of record, but that was my best recollection, and that's what I thought I said at the meeting.
So you would want that second sentence taken out?
Yes.
Did adopt a resolution for equity, you want that out?
It's repetitive with the first sentence. Mind you, I'm not making a substantive objection to that. It's just that I don't recall that that's what I said.
Well, I'm trying to help our recorder in what changed your proposed.
Drop that second sentence out about inclusion.
About equity, you mean?
About equity, yes.
So Commissioner.
You propose that the sentence that says, "He believed the city did adopt a resolution for equity," period, be taken out?
Not for equity. Oh, yeah, that's the one you drop out. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Commissioner Greenfield, I think you also were making a comment about the second sentence, which is, "Though reflected in the plan, it might not be the best place to do so." Were you suggesting a change for that sentence?
I'm not sure exactly what that even means, or what I might have said that came out that way. I don't think it needs to be stricken, but because it doesn't run counter in my memory, it just doesn't conform to my memory exactly.
This is Paula, Commissioner Greenfield. I could go back to the audio. We, you know, we've done that before and just do a verbatim segment or clean that up. I'm just not sure how to make that change on the record.
And it's also quite possible that I misspoke myself at the time.
So what is the action that we're taking on that?
But I would like you to drop out the sentence that includes the word equity.
We're doing that.
Yes, that's all I really am doing.
I'm going to bring up, the question I was asking is, what would you like done with this other sentence about the placement of inclusion in the plan?
That can be left.
You, okay.
I don't know what it means, but it can be left.
All right. Any, any other changes or corrections? If not, we need a motion on the proposed correction?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Wood. Call in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any objections? So that minutes have been approved with that change?
It's okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Greenfield. Our next work item is Urban Forest Management Plan. I hand it over to staff. Is Miranda there?
Yes, I am here. I.
Seeing this item and. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is Miranda Bateshall, Planning Director. I am happy to welcome Mr. Kerry Rappold, the Natural Resources Manager, to Planning Commission this evening. He's here to give us an update on the city's first urban forest management plan, a project that he is undertaking this year. They've just selected a consultant who will be helping on the project. It's pretty exciting, and as you'll recall, at the end of the town center planning project, one of the things that came out was to do additional work inventorying trees in the town center and to help enhance the urban forest in the town center to help us achieve the environmental sustainability or environmental stewardship goal that was in that town center. So Kerry's going to give us a little bit of a background on the project and the timeline for that and what will be involved, and give you an opportunity to ask questions if you have them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. I don't see the presentation. Do I have to start video?
Yeah, I can start the video. Then is it, that's on?
Right there.
Chair screen.
2A, okay. All right. Yeah, there we go. Okay, thanks. All right, well, good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. It's great to get together with you tonight and give you a little bit of an overview. I was here back in, I guess it was, I think, November, and that was prior to the selection of a consultant. So we went through a request for proposals and finalized that oh, about a month and a half ago, and ended up selecting a consultant by the name of Planet Geo. So I'll talk a little bit more about them later in the presentation. But I'm here tonight just to give you, kind of reintroduce you to, once again, to, you know, what we're doing with the Urban Forest Management Plan. You know, what are going to be the steps involved with that and the timeline, and just, you know, elicit or try to, you know, see if you have any input at this point in terms of moving forward. So I thought we'd just start with this quote, because I think it's really apropos in terms of when we're looking at, you know, the forests that we have here in Wilsonville or anywhere, that there's really a lot of work that goes into creating that, and a lot of vision, certainly. And, you know, the things that we see in this community in terms of the trees that have been planted, the trees that have, you know, just come in on their own, you know, the natural areas that we have, you know, are collectively what we call the urban forest. And so this plan fits in with this idea of, you know, that we need to have, you know, basically a community vision for what we want to see and where we want to go in terms of what this forest looks like. So you probably are, you know, aware of these types of things, but, you know, there's a lot of values that are associated with our urban forest and a lot of environmental services that they provide. And, you know, they can do everything from, you know, intercepting, you know, rainwater, you know, providing, you know, a reduction in heat island effects, controlling erosion. They certainly have a huge impact in terms of, you know, what they do for property values and aesthetics and just the overall well-being, you know, of what we have here in the community. It'd be hard to think of a, living in a place where you don't have trees and what they ultimately mean to us as individuals and as a society. So they, you know, they're an incredibly important component of what we see in our community. You know, there's certainly dollar values that you can associate with these types of things, and, you know, what they do in terms of increasing the value of not only, you know, property within the community, but the overall experience that we have in terms of, you know, the air that we breathe, you know, the impacts to our, our streams and wetlands, how they help us reduce energy use, you know, by providing shade. And certainly today, you know, carbon sequestration and climate change are a major concern throughout the world, and trees play a very important role in terms of that. So in regards to Wilsonville's urban forest, you know, if you spent any time in the community, I know you have, you know, you've seen some of the beautiful examples we have of that, whether it's walking around in Memorial Park or, you know, going to Vilbois or Graham Oaks Nature Park, or just, you know, the streetscapes that we have in terms of what trees provide. So, you know, basically, we're, we're looking at everything in regards to this, in regards to the urban forest, as far as this planning process that I'll talk a little bit more about. So at this point, you know, certainly the city has done a lot in terms of, you know, what we call our urban forestry program, and that can include everything from, you know, the comprehensive plan down through the development code. It's all the programs that we have within, you know, parks and recreation, public works, you know, things that we do in terms of our street trees, our inventory system that we have, and, you know, we've done, you know, a considerable number of planting projects. I've been, you know, involved with Friends of Trees now for 18 years, and we've done thousands of plantings within this community. Just recently, over the last year, we started to work with their neighborhood program too, which will give us the opportunity to bring some trees into neighborhoods, maybe where there's a deficiency there, and, you know, we can increase the overall canopy within the community, but also provide direct benefits to those neighborhoods. So it all fits together in terms of how we do this, you know, starting at a lot of the things that you look at in terms of, you know, planning and policy, and then working our way down through, you know, the various facets of how we deal with trees within the community. You're probably also aware that, you know, we've been, you know, a member of Tree City USA now for 21 years plus. We've received, you know, a number of growth awards, and we have a very, you know, active program in terms of what we do with Tree City USA. Also, we have a heritage tree program that's recognized a number of exceptional trees in the community, trees such as like the RV short tree that's adjacent to Park at Maryfield. It's a big Doug fir tree that has a lot of history associated with it. And, you know, but there's also a variety of other trees, whether they're sequoias, white oaks, you know, maples, black walnut, that have been recognized through this program. And so, you know, we're, we're interested in terms of like trees, you know, when they're seedlings all the way through, like these mature examples of, you know, these beautiful specimens that we have in the community. Like I said, I've been working with Friends of Trees for about 18 years, and we started out just working with their green spaces program. But like I said, within the last year, we've, you know, worked, we've incorporated their neighborhood tree program and into what we're doing in the community. And so that's going to be a long-term effort, just as the green space program is, to, to plant in areas where there might be some deficiencies in street trees and, you know, to improve the community in that way. So what is an urban forest management plan? You know, there's a number of components that go into developing a plan. First of all, it's always important to start with a vision, you know? Where do we want to see ourselves in terms of the urban forest canopy or the diversity of trees that we have? You know, how are we going to deal with the various issues that, you know, we're currently dealing with or that might be new issues that happen in the next five, 10, 20, 25 years? So we have to be thinking long-term and have a strategy really to address that. And then secondly, it's always, you know, important to have that inventory, that information that you gather that supports any decision-making that you're going to do. One of the benefits that we have is that over the last couple of years, there was an inventory done of over 24,000 street trees in the community. And we have that information in a database, and it's an important component of this plan as far as a starting point. So it really gives us a good jumpstart in terms of some of the information that we'll need. Ultimately, like many plans, we're going to be, you know, developing goals, objectives, and ultimately action in terms of how do we address, where do we want to see our urban forest, you know, in the upcoming years? And this will lead into, you know, an implementation plan. Certainly, you know, we're going to want to look at specific timelines and how do we go about doing the types of activities or the types of programs that'll get us towards that vision and those goals that, you know, we've set. And then ultimately, the only way this is going to be effective is that we can monitor over time and determine, you know, probably on a yearly basis, you know, where are we at in terms of reaching those objectives and those goals? And do we need to do anything adaptively to change what we're doing in order to facilitate, you know, meeting the ultimate vision of the plan? So as I mentioned, we hired this consultant, Planet Geo. They're, they're a nationwide company. They've done a lot of work in terms of urban forest management plans. They definitely have experience within the Pacific Northwest. Recently, they did a plan, or I think they're actually in the process of finishing it for the city of Tacoma. And so they're very familiar with the Pacific Northwest, some of the issues that we deal with. Basically, they have a very wide array of services that they provide in terms of consulting, inventory work. They've actually developed their own software called Tree Plotter, which we're going to have access to as part of this project, and it'll actually complement some software that we're using currently called iTree. So they have basically the full capabilities in terms of whatever we need to do as far as planning, inventorying, and ultimately, you know, setting up a system that'll help us to monitor it over time. This is just a very brief intro to some of the people that we'll be working with. Chris Pfeifer is the project manager. He's worked on quite a few of these plans in the past, but he has a team that's made of people that have experience in inventory work, people that, you know, are going to help us with the public outreach, and, you know, basically a full-service team in terms of what we need for this project. So I just want to touch base on the scope of work and the various items that we'll be moving forward on. You know, we want to keep you as involved with this process as much as possible. You know, we value your input, and we want to see that, you know, we're getting direction from you and, you know, and making the appropriate, you know, accommodations in terms of what that means. So like I said before, you know, a vision really comes back to sort of a long-term strategy. We see this plan as at least 25-year period of time. It could potentially be more, but, you know, we're looking that far out into the future in terms of what it means for our urban forest. Basically, we'll start with the status of this forest in terms of what are we doing, you know, to protect it? What are we doing to actively, you know, improve it? You know, what are some of the conditions that we're dealing with in terms of pests? What are the stressors? What are the various issues that we're dealing with? And this feeds into then, you know, the idea of looking both at this period of time, but then into the future, and, you know, what do we anticipate might be, you know, something that a year from now or five years from now or that, you know, over a longer period of time, that could be something important to, to document and address? Excuse me. We're certainly going to take a very close look at, one of the important aspects of the project is to conduct interviews with various staff within the city and to get a full understanding for what they're doing, how effective it is, and, you know, things and, or issues that they see potentially that we should be addressing. So we'll be spending quite a bit of time with that. If there are other stakeholders that we feel like we need to reach out to, I'll talk a little bit more about the two focus areas that we have in the plan, but certainly some direct outreach with people in Charbonneau is going to be beneficial. So the two focus areas are Town Center and Charbonneau, and they were picked because there are some existing conditions within Charbonneau that we need to address, and I'll talk a little bit more on the next slide about that. And then also because Town Center, as you're aware, you know, we spent an extensive amount of time developing that plan, you know, within the last year or two. Community engagement, like most of these projects at this point, considering COVID, it's going to be fairly challenging. You know, we're certainly going to make use of some of the outreach that we've already been doing. You know, Let's Talk Wilsonville is going to be an important aspect of this project. We'd like to survey the community. One of the ideas we had to maybe try to bring some, a different element to this project is a photo contest. We were hoping to get information out to the community where they could go out and photograph their favorite trees, and we feel that would be a great way to kind of engage them with looking at what's in the community, but also actually representing, you know, what they think is special within the plan itself. So we'll look at ways that we could make that happen in terms of working with the community. We'll certainly have to do some specific outreach with Charbonneau, and, you know, we'll work very closely with Miranda and the planning team in terms of, you know, how we do our work within Town Center. Ultimately, we'll have, you know, like most plans, a draft of the plan, presentations that are associated with that with the Planning Commission, the City Council, and then the final delivery of that plan. And then what's really going to be important to this, and it's important to any plan, is that once the plan's adopted, we want to have those outreach and education, you know, strategies that will allow us to continue to effectively implement the plan. And so those could be things such as our website, maybe there's some printed information we share with the community, maybe there's other events that we do, you know, to, to keep this in the community's mind in terms of how we move forward and actually implement what's in the plan. And then, like I mentioned before, monitoring is going to be really critical to see if we're really, you know, being effective with what we've done in terms of the plan that was developed and the strategies and actions that are a part of that. So the two focus areas I mentioned are Town Center and Charbonneau. Town Center is really going to be an opportunity for us in this plan to kind of do almost a similar exercise in some ways to what happened in Vilbois. If you walk around Vilbois today, one of the more special features of that area are the mature trees that we were able to preserve as part of development out there. And it really, you know, is a special experience in many ways when you walk around out there because you can see trees that are, you know, 40, 50 years old. And so we may not have the same number of special trees or specimens within Town Center, but we really want to make an effort to preserve what's there and, you know, really do a good assessment of what's worth preserving and really what are the most significant, you know, trees and species within Town Center that really should be taken into account as we move forward with more specific plans for the development of that area. In Charbonneau, as you know, I mean, Charbonneau is one of the older parts of the community, and one of the challenges with Charbonneau is actually French Prairie Road. There's over, there's 800-plus Northern Red Oaks that were planted along French Prairie Road, and there's been a lot of issues that the city has been dealing with, with those oaks over many years. And so we're going to do a specific, you know, inventory assessment of those trees, basically determine, you know, once again, kind of like Town Center, what are the ones that we really want to work to preserve? You know, what can we do in terms of ensuring their overall vitality and, you know, their, the ability just to retain what's there? So, I mean, we'll be looking at Charbonneau in its entirety, but really, French Prairie Road is going to be the major focus of that focus area. So out of this will come specific goals, objectives, and recommendations similar to the rest of the plan, but these will be, you know, tailored towards those two areas in terms of how we go about implementing the plan. So ultimately, the plan framework, there's going to be a number of planning elements. Some of these I've covered already, but, you know, we're going to have, you know, those, that aspect of the policies and plans that, you know, form the basis for what we're doing with this plan. You know, mostly those are going to be existing policies and plans. As I mentioned, we're doing these specific interviews in terms of, you know, working with our staff in terms of city operations, so that'll be an important component of the plan. Like I mentioned, the existing conditions of our urban forest, you know, what are the issues that we're seeing with that? And then the urban forest benchmarks is really going to be in our, our opportunity to compare what we're doing with other communities. So they're going to prepare a comparison that looks at five comparable communities, and we can see where we stand in terms of various issues, whether that's tree canopy, programs that we have, and see, you know, basically what's the status for our city. You know, we'll use everything that we get out of the community engagement process in terms of how that provides information for the plan. And then ultimately, what they do is Planet Geo, they use the U.S. Forest Service Urban Forest Audit System, and that's a system that has 11 categories that they look at in terms of existing policies, risk management, you know, issues that are, are part of what are happening within our community. And then basically, through that process of reviewing those 11 categories, they look, they find the information or resource gaps that we're dealing with. And so that's a critical component in terms of, when you fold this all together with that review, then you can really start thinking about the strategies that you develop. I mean, one of the strategies we might have is, you know, say we currently have an urban forest that has a, you know, or we have a canopy within the city of Wilsonville that's 25%, well, ultimately, we want that to be 30 or 35%. And these are just examples. So basically, we would have a target that would say we'd want 35%, and then we'd have a series of actions that would identify, well, how do we get to that point? What is necessary to do that? And then ultimately, like I said, the evaluation, the monitoring that would go into saying, are we being successful in terms of implementation? So this is just briefly the timeline we're looking at, and we're still working through some of the initial steps. We had a kickoff meeting with city staff, and I'm working with the consultant to develop some of the, some of the initial steps, which would be the inventory work that we're going to do, the community strategy, which is really our public outreach component, and then the work plan, the more detailed work plan in terms of how we move forward. We're probably, like I said, due to COVID, we're going to have to be very nimble in terms of how we actually do public outreach. Most likely, we're going to depend on, you know, Let's Talk Wilsonville to a great extent, surveying work that we do, and, you know, really reaching out as much as possible within the focus areas as far as, you know, getting that type of data gathering. And then we'll just move, you know, throughout the process in terms of, you know, the planning elements, working together with our other staff in terms of city operations, and then ultimately, whoops, sorry. Somehow this got cut off here. I'm not sure why. It should show nine months, so it's not a six-month process. We're not moving that fast. So I'm not sure why it's cutting it off, but. So ultimately, you know, we'll work through the, the public engagement part, and then ultimately, by the seventh month, we'll be looking at the draft of the plan, and then, you know, over those last three months, finalizing the plan and identifying. And then, you know, over those last three months, finalizing the plan and identifying all the steps for moving forward. So that's kind of the, the plan and the process in a nutshell. Seemed like an appropriate reference there, so...
Questions for Mr. Epple? Let's start with Commissioner Woods.
Yeah, I don't have a question. I have a comment, a suggestion under the community neighborhood outreach. I think it would be good to get the HOAs involved and make them aware of what's going on. And I think we may want to look at, first of all, of course, making them aware of what's going on, but getting them involved and getting their feedback and input directly. I believe all HOAs or the vast majority of them have a website, and information could be put up there or a link to any of the surveys, et cetera. But I think, you know, getting the homeowner, the HOAs involved is a good way to get our homeowners involved.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. You know, certainly the HOAs are a great conduit within the community, and we'd want to make use of them as much as possible. So, like I said, we're, I'm working with, we're going to have in the very near future like that outreach and engagement work plan, so I'll definitely make sure that's a part of it.
And then I do have a question. The last bullet under five, we're under cultural and ethnic challenges. What do you mean by cultural and ethnic challenges?
Can you, where was that again?
It's the last bullet in five, under, under the resource alignment. That's on page eight of 12.
Oh, okay. This is in the actual scope of work that I, the append?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I thought you meant something in the presentation. Page, you said eight?
I'm sorry, that's nine of 12. The last bullet of five.
Yeah, the top sentence of nine of 12.
Just a sec here. Cultural and ethnic challenges, and of course, equity of service outcomes. Yeah, I think we need to, you know, certainly discuss this a little bit more with them, specifically what this would mean in terms of the project. But I think, you know, we would just want to be equitable. That's one of the things that we looked at, certainly with the Neighborhood Tree Program, where, you know, we're doing some of this work. And basically, you know, if we have an underserved area in terms of, you know, where street trees are being planted or maintained, we'd certainly want to acknowledge that and make sure that the whole community is being considered in this process.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Willard, any questions or points?
Yeah, is there a follow-on presentation by the consultant or is this the only presentation?
Well, they'll be definitely coming. They're, they're scheduled for two presentations to the PC, but at this point, we wanted to save, you know, the opportunity for that until we have more to offer to you as far as their work.
Okay. Well, when I was reading through the scope of work proposal in a packet, I was having a hard time connecting to the approach that was described and which of that applies to the focus areas and which of it applies to the city as a whole. And so that was really confusing to me.
Okay. Yeah, I'd say, you know, certainly as far, as far as the approach, we're going to be looking at everything citywide. And then there's going to be really just in the focus areas, it's really that type of focus where we're looking at, like in Town Center, where can we retain trees, you know, in terms of future development? And it's going to be at that scale in terms of, you know, like the work we're doing as well as Charbonneau. We're not going to be able to get to that scale within the rest of the city. So it'll be, it'll be a broader approach in terms of that, you know, as far as what we look at.
Is the, is the framework ultimately going to provide some kind of, I want to make sure that as a former DRB member, we didn't have a lot of choice as to which trees were retained, which ones were being, were being removed in any given development. And so I want to know how we are going to be able to retain those and how is it going to reflect back into what policies will, will, will have to be updated accordingly?
Yeah, so certainly with the, the exercise to look at existing plans and policies, we'll be looking at our code too. And, you know, if, if there's something that would facilitate or make it easier in terms of, you know, the DRB or our view body to make a decision in regards to tree retention, I think that would be an important consideration for the plan.
Okay.
Is that it?
I would like to, would you, would you talk about the stakeholders that'll, stakeholder groups that are going to be included? Will business arborists be included? Because I, and the arborist that I employ, you know, that I hire to help out with my street trees, he has a lot of wisdom of the, the tree health in my neighborhood. And so I want to make sure that they're actually included in this.
Yeah, I think, you know, we'd want to look at, you know, some of the professionals that are working within the community. You know, we have people that we routinely work with in terms of, you know, where there's tree removal, where there's tree protection plans. Yeah, those people are, you know, some of the most knowledgeable that we could, you know, engage. And I think, you know, Commissioner Woods, you know, suggesting that we work with the HOAs. I think, you know, we'll have some targeted outreach within Charbonneau. I'm not exactly sure how we'll do it within Town Center, so I'll probably lean towards, you know, Miranda helping with some of that. But, you know, we want to find, you know, basically a number of different avenues to explore what's being done well, what's not being done well within the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Millen?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First of all, one that's off-topic, but Carrie, I just wanted to tell you that I enjoyed seeing the cameras looming between the Parker Maryfield and Graham's Oaks this year. Thank you for planning that. That was, that was lovely. I was wondering, first of all, to me, a plan, there needs to be kind of a, I guess, a vision statement. I know that people are getting tired of hearing that, but one of the things is how will it be different than it is now or how will it be improved? And I'm, I'm not sure I'm seeing, you know, other than the inventory being increased, I'm not sure I see what your goal is there. I mean, you know, in other words, what is the vision for this project? And maybe that's something you want to have come out of the public engagement. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, we want this very much to be a reflection of what the community feels is important. And, you know, we will suggest some things in regards to, you know, what the vision for the, for our urban forest, you know, will be, possibly some goals, but it's important that we hear the, the feedback from the community in terms of, you know, what they want to see happen, so...
Okay. Yeah, so that is going to happen in the community engagement piece, you think?
Well...
Is that where that's going to occur?
It'll be part of, you know, we'll, we'll certainly want to come to, you know, whether it's through the survey that we do or the information we put on Let's Talk Wilsonville or if there's specific meetings that we can still, you know, conduct, we'd want to present, you know, some possible options for what that would look like. You know, what does that mean? So it goes back to that slide, you know, that I had that spoke of the strategies, the actions, the targets. So really, you know, the goals are going to be in alignment with that, you know, for the most part, that, you know, they're going to lead into these strategies. So we'll have to think about, you know, what would be a goal that would be encompassing of, you know, maybe a group of strategies. And then bring, you know, I think we, we need to be bringing some of that information to the community. So it will definitely be part of the process.
Okay. And I'm assuming that invasive species and, and things will be incorporated into this in terms of, there are some new challenges out there in terms of some new bugs arriving. So I'm sure that's going to be a piece of this. And also, one of the other comments I have is, I don't know if the city has looked at any species of concerns that live in our current urban forest. Is there any that exist at this point in time? Do you know?
Well, you know, there's certainly species that we have that are, you know, definitely prone to pests, you know, that could be a considerable concern, you know, whether it's, you know, birch trees or something that, you know, is, is, is not going to be as resilient when it comes to climate change. I mean, some of the work that's happening in terms of climate change now is, you know, we're looking at species that maybe be, you know, are within a different environment that, you know, maybe it's Southern Oregon or Northern California that would be more likely to survive in this area over the next 20 or 30 years. So we have to look at that adaptability and, and see, you know, where do we want to go with this forest, you know, into the future? And, you know, what kind of accommodations do we have to make in regards to climate change? And that can include everything from the species that you choose and the vulnerability of those species to various, you know, pests and problems.
Okay. And then one other consideration that I didn't really see and hear, and I was thinking a lot about, we are, in some of our park proposals, we are certainly going to be expanding the use, public use of the habitat near the land in two different areas. I mean, if we ever get to having our, our kayak launch and our overlook walk. Where do you see that falling in terms of one of the focus, or is that going to be a focus at all? Because I think that can, you know, with the increased usage, people, that could dramatically change or affect our urban forests in those areas.
I'd see that as part of the review that they're going to do of our existing policies and plans.
Okay, so you see that occurring when, when they look at our existing plans?
Yeah.
That, what impact they may have on any of the canopy.
Sure. Yep, no, that would, that would be the most appropriate place for that type of review.
Okay, okay. All right, good. All right, looking forward to, and I, I'm glad you're using the, the benchmarks from U.S. Forest Service. Those are excellent, and I think they'll, they'll get us, you know, a good scorecard, so to speak. That's an excellent tool.
Thanks. I thought so too.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
Great. Okay, so Carrie, relating to the tree inventory, you talked in your presentation very briefly about some of the previous tree health activities that have been done. And I wanted to understand how, how those previous tree condition studies that the city has done will be integrated into the plan.
So, yeah, we, we spent, I think it was about a year, there was, it was 20, it was at least 24,000 trees that a couple interns that we had went around and they identified, you know, everything from the location to the species of the tree to the condition, you know, issues associated with those trees or that tree. And it's really pretty much the information that we would get in terms of if, say, we hired this company to do, you know, more of an extensive tree inventory. And so we're going to do something very similar to that in terms of the work they're doing within Charbonneau and Town Center. They're going to go to that level of detail. So when you combine those two data sets, you know, we're going to have a lot of great information to start with in terms of, you know, where we're at in terms of species composition, you know, the number of pest problems we're dealing with. And so they used a software, the city did when we did, did that project called iTree. And it'll be very easy in many respects to, you know, create an interface between iTree and TreePlatter, which we're using with this project. And so, you know, we've been able to, we use that, that street tree inventory. And when I say street tree inventory, it actually went beyond this, the right-of-way. I believe it was within, I can't remember the exact distance, but I think it was maybe 20 to 30 feet outside the right-of-way too. So it took in some natural areas also along the streets. And, and so, you know, it really gives us a great starting point because they've already used that data that they have from the, the, you know, the street tree inventory to identify deficiencies within the community for our Neighborhood Tree Program. So we're going to be able to bake, you know, make some, some, the same types of decisions, especially when we're looking at if we have a, a strategy to increase the overall canopy, you know, that's going to really help us to determine what should we be doing in terms of species composition, locations. And so it's, it's, it's an excellent starting point in terms of what we have.
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I remember from, from seeing that work that the interns did, was, were really impressed with, with all of that work and some of the insights, especially around the, the tree health in Villebois and some of the street trees there and the challenges with, with that area. And wanted to make sure that that was taken into account so that we didn't make those same mistakes in, in Town Center.
No, no, we'll be doing, you know, like I said, a very similar effort in terms of how we go about inventorying and assessing.
Okay. And so then, do you see this flowing into maybe street tree plan requirements for the, the Town Center area in terms of what, what trees, what species would be good to plant in which areas?
Yep. That'll be a direct outcome of this work.
Okay.
They won't, this consultant won't be creating that plan, but the information they gather will be probably the most important component of that plan in some, when it comes to trees.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Carrie. That's all I had. Commissioner Mesba?
Okay, thank you.
I would just add a, this is Miranda Bates, our planning director. I would just add a quick clarification for Commissioner Haverline, is that that information will be coordinated directly with the Town Center team and the Streetscape Plan that is currently launching. So we essentially are really trying to line up those projects systematically so that they can be coordinated. And so the information from this work will feed into the Town Center Streetscape Plan and address those questions that you're asking.
And one of the things that I'm interested in doing too, we're just starting the process of putting RFP together for updating our Stormwater Master Plan. So I've spoke to our consultant about, you know, the information that we gather in regards to how trees help us with stormwater management. And I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're capable of using that data as part of the work we do with our master plan, Stormwater Master Plan update. So we're always looking for ways to integrate and to be more effective with the planning we do, that, you know, it really provides information for, you know, maybe something else that, you know, we could use, you know, in terms of determining, you know, what's, what's the best approach.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, I couldn't hear you. Do you have a point or question?
Yeah, well, I certainly understand the need for the focus on Town Center and Charbonneau, but I'm wondering what we do to enlist the interest and support of other areas of the city who may feel left out by those two focuses.
Well, we're still going to do everything that, you know, is part of this project in terms of reaching out to the rest of the community. And we certainly want to elicit their, you know, input. You know, it's just that we knew that we had these two specific areas in terms of, you know, like I said, with Charbonneau where there's been so much discussion over the years about those Northern Red Oaks and issues that the city has had to deal with, you know, on a routine basis and concerns that the residents have down in Charbonneau. So it kind of rose to a different level in terms of what we're seeing in the community. And then just to make sure that, you know, we've put all this extensive effort into Town Center, that we do the best job as possible with the existing trees there. So these can definitely, you know, form the basis for other work that we do in the community, what, what comes out of this effort within Town Center and, and Charbonneau. And so if necessary, you know, we'll have basically a, you know, an action plan that we could use if issues like this happen in other parts of the community. So I guess that's the message that I would provide, that it's important to, you know, the entire community.
I think it would be important in any inventory of the city to query...
And so if necessary, you know, we'll have basically, you know, an action plan that we could use if issues like this happen in other parts of the community. So I guess that's the message that I would provide, that it's important to, you know, the entire community.
I think it would be important in any inventory of the city to query the HOAs about what are the pressing concerns in neighborhoods. You would certainly find in polling my particular area, you would find some longstanding and very pressing concerns by residents in my community, my area here, which is Canyon Creek, Meadows, and Estates, where we have some horrible prune tree, flowering pear trees, rather, flowering pear trees. And the whole HOA is concerned about it because our trees are aging and some of them have successfully petitioned to have their trees let down, but the community is not very happy with the condition of our trees or our ability as an HOA to deal with them. Is this kind of concern something which can be elicited for all of the HOAs? Because I suspect we're not alone at all. I've had some conversations with people in the neighborhood, the Daydream, south of Wilsonville Road, where there's a lot of community concerned about the condition of their trees. I don't know what relative ability and planning to deal with these issues, because these are obviously not in a position of being planned, planned developments, but rather maintenance and restoration of existing developments. I'm not sure whether, what the responsibility of Planning Commission is in that case, and I don't know whether or how the project is able or poised to address them.
I think there'll be, you know, there may be some specific areas that we would still, you know, look at in that respect, but I think overall what we're going to be looking at is, you know, what's the appropriate composition of trees, you know, in terms of the community? Where do we see issues in regards to, you know, specific trees that were used 10, 20 years ago? Are they really appropriate today? You know, there might be a strategy that comes out of this that looks at, you know, maybe we'll have a tree list that, you know, includes certain trees but excludes others. And it's a very dynamic process in terms of when you look at trees, because the decisions that were made, you know, five, 10 years ago may not be the ones you make today. And especially when it comes to something like an invasive species, you know, where, you know, all of a sudden now it's a problem that these trees can't cope with this. So, you know, we're going to look at the city, you know, the city in its entirety in terms of what's there. And we certainly won't be able to go to the level of detail that we do in Charbonneau and Town Center, but I hope out of this we come up with some, you know, some things that would be effective in terms of at least assessing, you know, when we have situations like that. What kind of process do we want to use to look at those? And what kind of decisions do we want to ultimately make?
I just, we think that it's important to have some sense of inclusion, implicitness here if we want to have broad community support for the overall plan.
I would agree.
Yeah, and I would second Commissioner Greenfield's statements regarding reaching out to the homeowners associations. I'll call it, I'm maybe the resident tree expert in Arbor Crossing, and we've had challenges with some of our street trees in terms of them falling down now that they're about, you know, 12 to 15 years old. And so, you know, they may not, from outside appearances, look like there's a problem, and it might not be picked up by maybe the casual observer, but by reaching out to the homeowners associations, you could find where some of those specific species are a problem and something that we wouldn't want to look at for future developments.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, I've had a lot of, you know, time that I've spent working with various HOAs in the community, and I think it's been time well spent, you know, and, you know, they're definitely a group, a body that, you know, we can rely on to provide, you know, really good input.
Yeah, I believe, as I had stated earlier, on the community engagement and with the HOAs, I think it's not only, you know, just finding out what's going on here, but I think in some communities, it may be an educational process, since we all know how important trees are in our neighborhoods and what they do. So I would, it would be, I feel it's very important that this community engagement, these meetings, I noticed here on the project plan that there are several meetings scheduled at various times, and I think there's a number of ways we can really look at that. Some of that's already been talked about, but even coming into the HOA meetings, you know, and giving, I don't know, a short pitch on what it is the city is doing, but also getting some feedback there, too. So I think this is really important. I think the other commission is, all feel the same about this community engagement and how important it is. So I just encourage you to continue to press on that.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, you know, like I mentioned, you know, once the plan's been adopted, we're going to have this education outreach, you know, strategy in terms of how do we move forward in terms of educating the public? And if we've already established those connections to the HOAs, hopefully then, you know, there are means to educate the people within those areas of the community.
Hearing the comments from the fellow commissioners and the fact that the question came up by a couple of them, why Charbonneau has a special place, and when I was reading the packet, the same question was in my mind, your presentation clarified why there is an area of special concern. I strongly encourage you, in your summary presentation or brochure, whatever is going to come up for this project and the stuff on the web, to make sure that the overall project is being presented as covering the entire city and that it is going to approach HOAs and different groups. And as part of your presentation, I caught on to the fact that part of what the contractor is going to be doing, what the consultant is going to be doing is identifying special areas of problem that can be improved, gaps in operations, in maintenance, in procedures, protocols, and so forth. So all of those should be, in this summary, stated as to including into all of Wilsonville. And you can then say as a follow-up that we already know that there are two areas of special concern because of the circumstances that we find in those areas. One is Charbonneau because of the oak trees and their placement. One of the people who's impacted by those oak trees is me. They keep dropping all kinds of stuff on my roof, my yard.
Okay.
So when I look at their placement, it doesn't make sense to me because on my side of French Prairie, they are squeezed between a concrete wall and a curb. And so I wouldn't have put an oak tree there, but I understand why the original developer did that for sales. So anyway, I mean, that is a special kind of situation. It's not being mistaken by having a special deal for Charbonneau. Town Center is another special situation where the city has already expended a lot of effort in planning that whole area and redesigning it for redevelopment, and part of the redevelopment will have to have landscaping, and that came up at the meetings as a very important element of that all redesign. So those can be explained at the end of the summary so that they have, they don't overshadow the whole project. So that's just my recommendation or my suggestion to you. I have a couple of points, and these are really implementation points. One of them has to do with the carbon sequestration that you brought up. In a number of other cities, the urban forestry program uses the wood that is harvested from either diseased trees or whatever, misplaced trees, to provide wood for artisans and woodworkers. And that kind of perpetuates that carbon sequestration, because the alternative usually is firewood, which releases it back into the atmosphere. I don't know if that kind of a program is even viable in a state like Oregon, which has wood coming out of all corners of it. But even if it means providing it as a free resource for woodworkers and because it doesn't have really any value other than that, it would be in line with that carbon sequestration kind of goal, I hope that it's considered. The other point that I would like to bring up and for your consideration as you get to the place where implementation becomes a part of this planning consideration, is to create a protocol for maintenance and provide a kind of a course almost for arborists to go through so that they can be certified by the city as having received the goal and objective for maintenance of the urban forest that the city has, so that they don't have to keep getting checked and double-checked and second-guessed by our arborists. I spent over $1,000 to have one of these oak trees, two of those trees, which is in my backyard, trimmed because it needed trimming. And when I contacted the planning department, they said you don't need any permit as such, but you need to talk to the street department, and they will come and talk to the arborist to make sure that the arborist is doing his job. And I responded to that email from the street department and told them, this is the arborist, this is what he's proposing, less than two inches of thickness of these trees that are crowding my own cherry tree in my backyard and killing it. So I didn't hear anything, and arborist showed up, my arborist, and started working, and the city arborist then got a call from somebody that somebody is killing the trees in the area. So they showed up, and the message to my arborist was, these are protected, which resulted in the arborist kind of pulling back and becoming overly cautious. He said, you know, I don't want to get into trouble. So it's just open-ended. What I'm saying is, let's come up with a protocol that has very clear kind of goals and objectives that we can train our commercial arborists on so that when they come to do the work, they can do what is necessary, and then the city can do spot checks or afterward check, and then maybe remove somebody's permit if they have the permit and they're abusing it or something like that. But let's not second-guess in the middle of the river, somebody who's on a cherry bucket up 50 feet in the air, which branch to cut and which branch not to cut. But these are all implementation kind of measures for the management of the urban forestry, and I'm hoping that it'll come out of that in due time anyway, and I will bring it up when we revisit this as the Planning Commission. I just wanted to raise it now so that as you're preparing this stuff, you can kind of have it in the back of your mind or as part of your conversation with the consultant.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other last comments for Kerry? Commissioner Greenfield, you're muted. You need to get out of mute. You're still muted.
Okay.
Now, go ahead.
Okay, good. The whole area of HOA has always been a mystery to me, that is, the relationship of the HOA and its requirements and limitations vis-à-vis the city's requirements and limitations, and for that matter, the owner's requirements and limitations. It would be really good if it was spelled out really clearly someplace so that we all knew what our responsibilities were as homeowners and HOAs, and reversed out of the flip of that, what our limitations are as HOA homeowners. I'm not sure whether this is spelled out or where this is spelled out, but this would be a good time and good occasion for that.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I second that, Commissioner Greenfield. I've had the same confusion as I was trying to figure out who needed what permit from whom in the oak trees. And Charbonneau is particularly confusing because the club enjoys some oversight, depending on how high you go and all that.
Yes, Charbonneau is definitely a very special circumstance in terms of, you know, the tree protection code and tree removal permits.
Yes. Well, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your input. We'll be talking to you more as we move forward and sharing more information as the plan progresses.
We look forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is the I-5 pedestrian bridge. It looks like we have some pretty pictures.
Again, this is Miranda Bates, Shell Planning Director with the city, and I'm excited to introduce this project tonight. As you know, this is an important project that is linked to a number of adopted master plans, including the Bike and Pedestrian Connectivity Plan, the Transportation System Plan, and the most recent Town Center Plan. And there, as you'll recall, we've had one or two other work sessions with you earlier this year that have laid out the scope for the I-5 pedestrian bridge design project and when the key milestones and community engagement pieces are. And tonight, we are here with kind of the first step on that, related more to the Gateway Plaza, actually. As you know, we had a lot of key questions for the community earlier this year in an open house and online and a survey, and through that process, we got some initial ideas and input about different bridge types, which we are looking at and will actually come to you in a future meeting. But in thinking through the different bridge types, one of the key things we had to do was look at the plaza and some different high-level concepts for that. So that's what the team's going to share with you tonight. Zach Weigl, Capital Projects Engineering Manager, is here to kick off the presentation, and he'll introduce the rest of the team members that are here with him tonight, and also outline for you the specific purpose of tonight's presentation and the feedback that we are seeking from you. So, thank you.
Yeah, again, my name is Zach Weigl, Capital Projects Engineering Manager. Good evening, Chair Mesba and members of Planning Commission. As Miranda said, since our last meeting...
Hey Zach?
Yeah?
Hey Zach, is your mic on? We're getting the mic from the City Hall council chambers and not from you.
Yeah, it's on. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we've been getting some feedback from the other speakers, but yeah, keep going.
All right, so since the last time that the design team was here, that we've been working, developing concept designs for the plaza layout and for the bridge types, and Alex Stupi with MIG is here tonight with his team, and he's going to walk through how this plaza layout has evolved and some of the major considerations that have gone into those designs. So as you're listening through to the presentation tonight, some of the feedback that we're looking for from you all are, what challenges do you see with some of these designs? What are the additional considerations that the design team should be looking at as we move forward, refining these? So as you're listening through to the presentation tonight, some of the feedback that we're looking for from you all are, what challenges do you see with some of these designs? What are the additional considerations that the design team should be looking at as we move forward, refining these concepts? And then what are questions that the design team should follow up with you on when we present these revised concepts later on in July? So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex, and he can walk you through it.
Great, thank you, Zach. Appreciate the time this evening, in front of you, to show where we've been and what we've been up to the past few months. Before we start in the overview, I just want to recognize Melissa Erickson will be actually stepping through some of the design content. Her team, which includes Casey Howard, who has been pushing a bunch of this forward, she'll also be here for questions if need that, as well as Bob Goodrich with Dell, who is leading the bridge design. So if there are questions that pop up, we have the team here to be able to answer that. So for tonight's presentation, we're going to talk just briefly about public engagement, kind of how that's been applied to the plaza and bridge concepts that we have today. And then I'm going to turn it over to Melissa, who's going to talk about, you know, the scaling context of both the ramp and the plaza, bridge and design variables, and then some of the plaza alternatives. This is a complicated project, there's a lot of pieces, but also, we think there's been a lot of movement to actually incorporating a lot of the things that we heard, both through the survey as well as the public open house that kicked off the project back in February, when it was a different world. We were all in the same room, talking to each other. So with that, next slide. I wanted to just remind Planning Commission, you know, that the key elements and themes that came out of both the survey, out of the community kickoff, as well as our initial meeting with you to kick the project off with you, have really been moving forward through with this project. And you'll see a lot of these are very consistent still with the Town Center goals and objectives that we developed, you know, over three years ago. But, you know, themes that resonate, that we've been really trying to apply to these concepts, are, you know, really focusing on harmony with nature, still providing a family-friendly both connection as well as experience through the plaza. But, you know, understanding that the Wilemont River and Boones Ferry are both kind of those natural elements that define Wilsonville, but also have historic elements with them as well, too. So how we think about movement of the bridge is actually, you know, kind of historic elements of how people have moved through this area over time, across the river, or across even, you know, roads and connections. We wanted to be inclusive and welcoming, but also active and mobile. So those themes have been carried forward through with this project. I want to stress, though, that with the pieces that Melissa is going to show you, those will have certain levels of detail that we'll get into. So as you see these themes and prioritizing elements, you're going to see some more now. As we get into details later, you'll start to see others, where, for example, prioritizing elements, for example, number four, the plaza should incorporate art. That's there, and we acknowledge that. We're just not quite at that point yet of being able to actually show where art is or where it's going to be. But that is something that's on the list, that will be part of that. With that, though, number two, bridge connections supporting future development. That's something that's very important at Town Center, we recognize that. And I think you'll start to see when we look at bridge and plaza as key elements, they're not isolated from one another, they're really integrated into the larger scheme that we worked with through Town Center, and that we expect as development comes in, we'll, you know, integrate those key pieces. So we haven't forgotten these, some are here now, others will come in when we come back to you later in the summer, and certainly as we start to get into the public process later this summer, you'll see that fleshed out even more. Just as a reminder, you've seen this slide before, these were the kind of key outcomes from the open house, the public survey. Arching, cable, and modern artistic were three bridge structures that the community preferred, but also kind of how that relates to one another from a user standpoint. Those features are we're considering as a part of the bridge structure. But also, you know, what the bridge actually has. Does it have transit? Does it have, you know, how does it incorporate bicycle and pedestrian connectivity? How do those modes move together? Are things that we're considering primarily because people want to feel safe on the bridge? But also kind of fun things, like unique lighting. What does that look like? You know, is it specific lighting elements or other types of features? Again, these are things that aren't necessarily in the concepts tonight, but are considerations as we're moving forward, and things that you'll start to see in the survey later this summer that we're just starting to develop. Other key features within the plaza, sustainability features, green stormwater infrastructure, whether that's, how that's incorporated is still to be determined, but is it an art element? Is it more of a traditional stormwater feature? Those are things we're starting to work out. You know, focusing really on the social aspect of the plaza and what this means for adjacencies, those are things that we're really starting to try and dive into now, because those are kind of the big move elements with some of the details to follow later. So I just want to remind people about this. You'll see some of this tonight, a lot of this will need to come later in the summer.
All right, which brings you to me. So what we wanted to do tonight was give you guys kind of an overview of kind of where we've been, what we've been doing, and kind of a teaser for what's going to be coming, because there's been a lot of background work that's been involved, just given the complexities of the project. And given all those complexities, we're kind of breaking it into two pieces. So our goal tonight is to kind of give you that larger vision of some of the considerations that we've been looking at, so that when we present the alternatives, that the next time we come to see you, they'll be a better basis for kind of understanding why some of those decisions are made, and there's a clearer story as well as additional detail that we can take a look at. So as Alex mentioned, context is going to be one of the key drivers in trying to take a look at what are we connecting to, what's adjacent, where are we wanting people to connect through and adjacent to, as far as where are those energy points and those connections? As everyone is aware, there's going to be a western ramp that's going to cross over the I-5, there's going to be some way to get back down and entry plaza that is in this space. For context, this is an old aerial, so this little triangle, green lawn, is now where the I-center is, so that's the one piece that's a little bit off. But the green spine from the Town Center runs along this southern edge of the park space. So the scale of the landing area has been one of those things that, as we've been looking at, how we best look at the programming components based on what's in the Town Center Plan for this area as a proposed gateway and landing area, is really kind of critical to tell the story of what can be accomplished in this space. So the dashed area that you see on the graphic is roughly the parcel area for the off-ramp or on-ramp, depending which direction you're going, as well as the plaza space, as it is overlaid onto Town Center Park, just so you can kind of have some relative idea as far as scale and what we have to work with for overall components. Oops, sorry, run button. So within that, we've been trying to take a look at a range of different ramping forms. The bridge over I-5 has to have at least 18 feet of vertical clearance over I-5 based on DOT requirements. That means we have to make upgrades to try and address that. So trying to take a look at what are the different ways we can look at the change of elevation and have that be part of the actual space, has been one of the key aspects, and that form has been critical in trying to take a look at that. So again, for context, here's kind of the parcels we're looking at, the existing slightly recessed stormwater facility and the adjacent parking space, again, the lawn areas actually that the I-center currently, this is a view looking slightly from the northwest, looking southeast for context, this is the detention basin. So in the considerations for the ramp on the east side, we've been looking at loops and swoops, also convenient just for naming and discussions. But trying to take a look at how we compactly address grade change with a looping structure or kind of your classic spiral, which means a smaller footprint, but potentially more structure to consider, and looking at some different precedents in different areas of how that might be articulated and then inferred into making something that's much more iconic to Wilsonville. But then also taking a look at something that's slightly more of a gentler swoop as a consideration, is a singular, more arching transition, this happens to Mylan's Land Bridge in Vancouver as far as one consideration. One of the overarching thoughts on both of these is obviously the accessibility, the actual grades on the actual ramp itself. With a more compact turn, we actually might need to have a slightly longer structure to ensure that we actually are meeting appropriate grades on the tightest part of the spiral. A swoop as a counterpoint might make those grades a little bit easier, but it also means people tend to go faster. So we're trying to balance those pieces as far as the safety of bikes and pedestrians, as well as allowing for the future potential for economist vehicles, should that become an option down the road. So those helps kind of establish some of the different aspects along that line. With the bridge itself, there are really kind of two main actions that play as far as the actual alignment over I-5. And there's a northern landing, which basically kind of takes us closer to the I-center, and then a southern landing, which takes us closer to the Fries parking lot. There, of course, would be a diagonal option, which is something we're still kind of loosely considering, although diagonal means a longer bridge and therefore more cost, so that's a consideration. There are some issues with looking at both of these, because on the west side, we obviously have to make grade along Boones Ferry Road and trying to limit impacts to the adjacent private development. So there are some inherent benefits for the south landing, whereas the north landing potentially might require us to actually look at more of a spiral curve as far as the ramp to address it, which might have concerns, which we'll talk about momentarily. With either option for the bridge crossing, depending on whether it is a spiral or a swoop for the option, any of those means that we essentially have three primary areas that we're looking at for the plaza location. There's either a western option, have a middle point, or an eastern area. Obviously, there are pros and cons to all of those, particularly having the plaza on the west side, it means it's closer to I-5 and sound, and considerations there as far as whether that's there or really want people to be focusing on. On the east end, you know, it's definitely a more connection to Town Center as far as those opportunities. The midpoint starts becoming an issue of trying to just take a look at what the circulation paths are, and we'll show examples of that momentarily. But all of those are being considerations as we're looking at kind of our kit of parts for decision-making as we kind of look to pulling together the three options that we'll be moving forward. In all cases, one of the key considerations is the grade change I mentioned, the 18-feet vertical clearance over I-5 that's going to be required. So what this diagram is trying to help explain is we have a few other options where we're laying out the ramp options, and we have color-coded kind of the ramp and the bridge piece itself. So the section that is purely an overhead structure is this lighter color, where you can see here's Town Center Loop, I-5 would be just off this section, where we're still maintaining that vertical clearance. And then as we clear Town Center Loop, we start making the grade change, whether it's in a ramp or a swoop. That's the transition where we start trying to take a look at opportunities for, parts of that may be usable space underneath, but part of it will get lost with grading to help address getting the ramp onto slope and to adjacent grade, to the point where we start seeing a darker blue where we're fully at grade for considerations. So we kind of take those pieces and start to kind of come up with, we came up with four key general diagrams that we're using to kind of develop the plazas, and we ruled out one, which I'll talk about, but I'm going to give you a kind of a brief overview of the three. We looked at two variations on the loop, one with a northern entry, one with a southern entry, and we looked at two versions of the swoop, again, looking at the north and south. On the north loop, which is the top diagram, the light gray is the ramp that's on the structure that's starting to make its grade change as it goes down. At roughly this point in the color section, we're looking at the ramp on grade, and then it spirals down to a point slightly right underneath the initial overpass where it would become on grade and cut through the plaza space. The sightlines indicate what you could actually potentially see. So from this vantage point, you would see all the way through this plaza area, you would also see underneath the overhead structure to this back wall where the grading would kind of cut through. So you have actually quite a bit of clear visibility within this section. If you're on Town Center Loop, you have very limited, because this section is going to be on grade adjacent to it, as well as have an overhead structure, and your view is slightly cut off, just for comparison. On the southern version of the loop, there's a slightly different change. And so again, you have an overhead structure that's starting to ramp down at this point. At this point, you're on grade, so there's essentially an earthen berm and/or a wall that will be attached on this backside as it hits grade, and then continues on a straight shot for the green loop and Emerald's necklace, or chain, pardon me, components. With this one, again, there's a pretty clear sightline from the kind of the Fries corner, and from the northwest corner, slightly improved but not too different from what happened on the north loop. On the swooping option, I'm going to start with the one we're keeping, on the southern option. What this allows is probably the cleanest sightlines as components, the large overhead structure continues through, this midsection, which kind of serves as a kind of a curve, separating it from the I-center, would be on grade or there being components next to it, and then the last portion would be on actual flush with grade. Those sightlines are relatively smooth, it means this section is not really seen because it's cut off, but you get this entire large area as areas that would be potentially visible. And from the Town Center Loop, northern corner, again, you can see through underneath this structure, but then your sightline is kind of dead-end when you hit the grade on the backside. The option that we looked at that has so far ruled out as an option is the northern option. In particular, it's very similar, what ends up happening is the crossing is at the north side of the plaza and swoops down and cuts through to the end, same kind of components. The issues here really have to do a little bit more with some of the sightline challenges and where the spaces were provided. In some ways, this provides a larger gathering area to the north part of kind of the main pedestrian and bike flow, but the sightlines, because of how the ramp is needed, given the amount of length that is needed to get the elevation up, means that the views from the corner start getting truncated, because you really immediately have to start looking at raising the pathway and having either a retaining wall or earthen berm, so that your sights in are really kind of limited only to the north part, you have to actually get into the plaza to take a look at it. The other kicker on this particular option is there are some issues with the northern access in general that we're still considering. The loop has, because of its condensed footprint for addressing the grade change, we're still viewing as a consideration because of the added length by lengthening out the ramp needs. On the north swoop, we've taken this one out of consideration, but we did look at it, and we'll share another little diagram in a moment that talks about that. So we have a bit of programming and development to try and take a look at. Obviously, we have some sightlines, earthwork, we have a variety of very much on the detail and actual programming of the spaces. What has been outlined in the Town Center for the plaza is that this needs to be a focal point for the community, it needs to have year-round grabbing spaces, and it needs to have safe and bike connectivity. One of the pieces associated with either the loop or the swoop, as I mentioned, it has to do with the speed of travel of those on it. The one plus with the tighter circulation is that does kind of encourage people to go a little bit slower, just inherently by the shape. However, that does mean we might need a slightly longer piece in order to address the accessibility grade for the tightest of the turn. On the swoop, that's a little bit easier, the more gentle form, however, that does mean that people are going faster, so we start having to take a look at the potential conflict between plaza use, pedestrians and bikes, and traveling in different directions. So we're looking, as Alex outlined from the public feedback, really trying to take a look at the seating, the landscaping, refinding the different types of gatherings to activate these plaza spaces. And the three alternatives that we'll be bringing to you next will have the entirety of the western approach, the bridge, the ramp down, and the plaza, that those pieces can fit into consideration. What we're hoping today to get from you is answers to kind of these kind of simple questions to kind of help us as we're looking at refining those and adding more detail now that we've kind of worked out the loose parts of what the different parameters were and getting those to a more limited fashion so we can assemble, is trying to take a look at their thoughts on challenges you see in any of these, anything you want us to address as far as considerations, and/or anything specifically that you would like to make sure that we answer when we come back to you in July and/or have provided.
Very well, thank you. Let's start with Commissioner Everline.
All right, great. Okay, a couple of things. Okay, a couple of things. What was the rationale for picking the two sightlines that you did? And could you explain why each of those are important to the project?
Sure, I'll take a first stab, and then Bob, you can feel free to pop in and correct me, since you're actually the one who knows more specifically on the bridge. But part of the pieces I'm looking on the north and south is a midpoint didn't buy us enough length and/or kind of truncated, and made the western portion, and I'm going to actually go backwards so that you can, we have something to talk about. Part of the issue in looking at this edge and where we're approaching it is trying to take a look at how we make the grade change on the western side, make the crossing over, and where we can actually kind of keep the clearance over town center loop, and then drop back down in a reasonable fashion. We briefly looked at kind of a midpoint, but it seemed to kind of truncate the site and made less of it usable, so we kind of ruled that out, and the north and south became the two kind of dominant points for trying to take a look at it. Bob, I'll defer if I missed.
Yeah, I guess what I want to, maybe I misspoke. So you've identified sightlines and those red arrows. What is the purpose of those and why are those two areas important?
Oh, sorry, thank you. So we actually did those based on an initial conversation with city staff. As we were talking about trying to envision, and I'm sorry, I use my little video screen to do hand gestures, but the crossing is coming over 18 feet above, and the plaza is 18 feet below. And at some point, there's a transition that happens, whether it's a spiral or a loop. And in talking to the city, one of the key discussions was trying to figure out what can you actually see through, and what is actually structured? And so those sightlines were trying to take a look at areas that we knew that there was going to be transportation and additional circulation coming from, and trying to take a look at, at what point can you see through the project, and what do you get, where did your view get stopped because of structure? And so those were the specific reasons for those points.
Okay, great, thanks Melissa, I appreciate that clarification.
I think, can I just add to that real quick?
Sure.
Yeah, I think another consideration is just the experience of being within the space or around it, and safety, of course. We really don't want to create areas that are out of sight from main circulation areas, especially the Emerald Chain where most people are coming and going, just to keep the open sightlines for safety considerations. I think that was a major consideration as we were thinking through this.
Oh, great, thanks. And I guess the thoughts on the three different options, and thank you for having this page up. You know, the one thing that jumped out at me is of the three options that are still, I'll call it, in the running. I gravitated towards the south loop mainly because of the continuous plaza space, gives, it opens you up for more opportunities from a design perspective in terms of active space. Another thing I was thinking of when I was looking at the north loop and the south swoop was both of those, with it being disconnected plaza space, you're increasing the opportunities for bike pedestrian conflicts if you have especially kids running back and forth from one plaza area to another. You know, that's a, I'll call it a high-risk activity, especially in an area if you've got any significant amount of bicyclists going through. And so that also made me gravitate towards that south loop, because you don't have all of those crossings if you're just looking at the plaza area. Let's see, I'm looking at your questions that you want answered. I don't think I have any specific questions to answer the July update. I like the progress so far, and I'm excited to see how it progresses here in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Commissioner Mellon?
Just a couple, we're probably not there yet, but in terms of cost is obviously always a factor, and I don't know, when I look at this, I think, well, I like the south loop, but I'm wondering if that's a significant more cost, and is there any way to kind of give us that kind of information? So that's the first thing, and then I have another one, but do you have any comments on that, or will you have some input for us in the future?
We will, in the future.
Okay. Well, but I mean, in July, is that, is it going to be possible to give us?
Yeah, we plan on having some rough costs for July. I mean, we're certainly thinking about that with, you know, additional length and width of bridge and those kind of pieces, but as far as actually having more relativity into actually numbers, we're planning on having some loose numbers when we come back to you.
Okay. The second thing is, and we've been talking about the grade, and you're talking that happened to be over top of the freeway, obviously, and I'm assuming that when you're talking about these grades being stepped down, that they would accommodate a person in a wheelchair or some kind of motorized scooter type of thing, mobility device of some sort?
Absolutely. One of our key practice areas is actually universal design and accessibility, so we probably look at that more than a lot of people, and so looking at other power-driven mobility devices beyond ADA is certainly a key part of the circulation considerations.
Okay.
I was going to say, part of that too is the grade, that the length of the approaches is actually driven by making sure that we meet that grade. So what you're seeing here is consistent with what we want to do for ADA, but that's a lot of what drives the length of the approaches actually, is to be able to meet that.
Right. And then just kind of a reaction is that initially I was liking the swoop, but the loop freeing up more plaza space starts to become attractive. So just, that's just a comment. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Willer?
Yeah, I don't think I have any further, I, it's interesting, I'm glad you walked us through the sightlines, I'm glad you walked us through the considerations of breaking up the active plaza space, because I was going just on, you know, visual appeal. Those are very good considerations, so I'm glad you guys are considering those. So I don't have anything additional to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, you know, all of the previous comments from commissioners, I would ditto, particularly the sightline piece, but I do have a comment here. The, let's see, that would be the loop, the south loop. I think that's, you know, from an aesthetics vision, it appears that that's very, very nice. My concern is, and it was mentioned a little bit earlier about, you know, bicyclists and pedestrians on that loop and going around, if that could be a problem depending on how tight that is or how open that is. So that's the only comment I would have on that piece, although I do like the loop, I like the south loop better. But you also mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, did you mention autonomous vehicle at some juncture, or you guys are thinking about that? Is that correct? Did I get that correctly?
You did.
So in that case, since I know a lot about those, when I look at the swoop, that seems to me that that would accommodate something like that much better than the loop. Now, I could be wrong, but at any rate, you guys have worked that out, I know. But everything that you've done here in presenting looks good to me. Once again, I think the loop, from my perspective, and I also think also from line of sight, is a good option. So I don't have anything else, you guys keep moving ahead, this looks good, I look forward to seeing when you come up with the final.
Commissioner Wood, thank you for those comments. I think, just to kind of expand on the autonomous vehicle question, you know, this is a bridge that, 250, 100-year bridge, and that we have had some conversations with SMART about, you know, the future, and you know, a lot of that is, you know, there's unknowns, of course, but you know, we are trying to think about how you make sure you build a structure that will last, and that lasts for multiple modes of travel, and certainly autonomous vehicles are things that we're seeing now, even in some communities, albeit limited, that's going to change in the coming years. Bob, I'm wondering, do you have any comments at all on the autonomous vehicle question? I know your team's been looking at that. Are there challenges, considerations between the loop and the swoop that Planning Commission would want to think about?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think they're fairly, the radius really is the important part of accommodating the autonomous vehicle, and I think we're using kind of a similar minimum design radius for any of the alternatives. So there shouldn't be a big difference, should not be a big difference.
Got it.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for that clarification. Good. Thank you. Commissioner Greenfield?
From bird's eye advantage, I think that the swoop is a nicer-looking alternative, but from ground level, from the level of the actual path, I think that, I think that the south loop is probably the best one. I'm a little concerned in all of these, how about, how does one get from town center into the plaza area without, well, I should say, how does one cross the pathway to get from town center into any of the plaza areas? Is there, are there going to be some kinds of controlled crosswalks, or what is, how is safety addressed?
Yeah, we're, you will definitely see a little more delineation in what we bring to you next as far as kind of how that transition and the connection between the main circulation path and the plaza, including some additional kind of expansion and brooding of how that plaza opens off the dive, but we aren't there yet, but we will.
But I think, I concur with Commissioner Everly about the preserving the maximum possibilities for the plaza area in south loop. The rest of that, the south swoop or north loop, both would offer more possibilities for creative articulation, architectural articulation of the pathway and landscaping, but I think that for usability of the whole area, that the south loop has the greatest possibilities.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have much to add. I love the aesthetics of south swoop.
So do I.
I think that's because of the pretty picture that you showed.
Like the Uber.
But I don't recall having seen anything like that for the loop, but probably there are cases where loop can be also aesthetically pleasing. Any other comments, questions, remarks on this topic?
Well, okay, I'll do one last one, just because Commissioner Wood's got me, got my interest piqued with the whole autonomous vehicle thing. Maybe that would be something for the July update, is talking through how that would work on that bridge. You know, we've got, it appears like we would likely have a bike area and then a separate pedestrian area on the bridge. What would the thought process be for autonomous vehicles on the bridge? Would it be traveling in the bike lane, one lane, both direction? How would that all work? That would be an interesting thing to understand in terms of this planning.
We can bring that to you next time.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, I have one final little teaser that I wanted to share with you guys, because we aren't there yet, and this way you don't get to comment, because it probably will change. But what I wanted to at least show you is at least some very rough, very conceptual sketches. We'll leave it at that, as far as some of the different things we're starting to think about, and we've got a lot of other ones, we're kind of teasing through, but trying to take a look at three different types of bridges, really trying to take a look at what are the different aspects of that that make it specific to Wilsonville, and what that story is, how the public art's going to be included, pardon the little warning there, and how that is articulated. So you'll see more when we come back, and it'll be more fully baked as far as what this is going, but I appreciate the comments and the initial feedback as far as, you know, some of the considerations as far as the safety and circulation delineation that we'll take a look at, and then obviously, there'll just be more detail for you to be taking a look at. But thank you for giving us the chance to give you at least a preliminary overview of kind of what's coming, which will mean that we won't have to visit this when we come next time, we get to start with the good stuff.
I assume that this will also include the cost for these different ones?
Yeah, we'll have some very rough costs.
Loose costs is what, very, dollar signs, not dollar signs.
Dollar signs are important.
Well, thank you all for excellent work. This is very exciting. We appreciate your time, and we look forward to coming back to you in just a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So the next item is annual housing report.
Thank you, Chair Masbah. Commissioners, again, my name is Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director with the city, and here we are, a year later since the last time we came to you with an annual housing report. I am very excited to introduce to you Georgia McAllister, Assistant Planner with the city. I believe this is her first presentation before you, and she's very excited to share with you this year's annual housing report, which is now published online. As you know, we switched a couple of years ago to presenting this information online through a program called Story Map. It allows us to be able to present the information in a more interactive fashion with the community. It shares permit data and plan information that people can zoom into the map and access different levels of information and get more about the recent housing activity. You'll also see some sections that Georgia's going to walk through, that she's expanded on, based on previous input from the Planning Commission, particularly from last year and over the last couple of years of you seeing this information. So without commenting any further at this point, I will hand it over to Georgia.
Hi, good evening. Like Miranda said, I'm Georgia McAllister, Assistant Planner with the city of Wilsonville, and we're going to be going through Wilsonville's annual housing report from 2019. So I just want to begin this with a quote, actually, because we're going to look at a lot of statistics, and a lot of graphs, and a lot of different things, and I just want us to remember why we're really looking at this, why this is important. The quote is, "The ache for a home lives in all of us, the safe place where we can go as we are and not be questioned." So I just want us to keep that in mind as I go through a lot of different statistics tonight. So this housing report will be the sixth that the city has done since we noticed a need to start tracking different trends in housing throughout the city. So what are we really going to look at tonight? We're going to look at the city permit data, as well as some more information about the characteristics of the housing, what construction looked like, what are the housing look like size-wise, and I used a few different sources to put this together, including data from Metro, the US Census, from PSU, Zillow, and Realtor.com. And again, just a little brief overview, we're going to first address what the actual inventory is, what numbers we're looking at, what homes were permitted for construction, what the cost is to live in Wilsonville, both renting and owning a home, what our neighborhoods really look like, and what is to come with our neighborhoods, the trends that we're seeing, what, both in housing development and the trends we'll be seeing in affordability. So in 2019, Wilsonville permitted 134 homes, which is a little bit down from previous years, and we'll talk about why that is a little later on. But of these homes, we saw that 33 units, or about one in five of them, or, sorry, 33 units met the definition of middle housing, which meant about one in five of them were single-family attached. And then we had some more variety of housing, including triplexes, fourplexes, and cottage style, which is a really cool one. It's not the traditional multifamily we see, which is apartment-style. Instead, they're using this, they're sharing a lot together with separate homes. And this past year, we had one approved housing development, and that was Frog Pond Meadows with the 74-unit subdivision. With this, we'll see consistent housing coming in the future, and Wilsonville has seen a lot of housing construction over the years, with this peak occurring back in 2016. with this peak occurring back in 2016, and we're seeing a little fall off here. It's because we're transitioning from Villebois to some other sections of town, including the Frog Pond area. And we'll see, you know, a little drop off and hopefully, again, ticking up. So when we're looking at our housing trends, it's really important we pay attention to how population is growing in relation to how housing is growing as well. And we can see that this past year, Wilsonville grew in population about 1.5%. And this is, this is kind of on par with our trends we've seen over the past few years. Over 10 years, we've had a 2% increase on average. In this trend line here, we're not just looking at the numbers. We're comparing percentile growth. So you really can see how our housing growth relates to our population growth. And in general, we have this rise in housing just a little bit before we get the rise in population. And there's a little inconsistency here, which probably related to just finishing up some construction. And we got a lot of people in here in 2018, sort of resumes to normal again in 2019. So as I discussed before, we're going to see a pretty big shift in what construction looks like in Wilsonville. For a long time, we were focused in Villebois over here. And that was a very unique type of housing, is this really cool urbanist development. And because of that, it's very, it was densely developed, and a lot of it went very quickly. And Frog Pond is going to be a bit of a different neighborhood. We have some more larger lot homes. There'll still be a mix with duplexes and different types of home other than just single family. But it's going to be a different type of construction, a little bit slower. And we'll see how the market really affects that as we see the effects of COVID-19 and other economic events. And like I was talking about, the vision for Frog Pond, we're going to have connected neighborhoods, walkable active streets. So in a lot of ways, it has the qualities of Villebois. But we're going to see a different way for Wilsonville to do that. Here, we can take a look at the individual permits a lot more specifically. If you click on the dots, they have some information regarding both lot size and home size, all of that. On average, our mean lots were about 4,500 square feet. And the mean home size was about 2,200 square feet. You can see that even in 2019, the majority of the housing construction was still in Villebois. But we're starting to transition over here. Some of the variety of housing, we had the lowest, or the smallest lot size was just under 800 square feet. And then the largest was all the way up to about 30,000 square feet. So there's a really big variety there. And then also, in home size, we had a large range, starting from the lowest at about 1,300 to six, or almost 7,000 square feet. Once again, this map just gives us a snapshot of not just this past year, but all the years we've been doing the housing report and what those permits have looked like, how it's changed and how our housing has changed. Here, we can take a look at some of the different developments. So how our housing came about in Wilsonville. This orange home here represents the one in 2019, which was Frog Pond Meadows. You can see the mean lot size for Frog Pond Meadows was about 5,000 square feet. And this is the plan for what it's going to look like when we start getting it constructed. Here, this just really emphasizes a lot of the theme of 2019, which is we have these white spots where really heavy construction was occurring for a long period of time. You can see a little bit in Charbonneau, but the majority of it is over here in Villebois. We're starting to get a little hotspot over on this side of town. So we talked about what housing looks like, but what does it actually mean to live in Wilsonville? How much does it cost to live here? In 2019, the median home cost was about $460,000, which was a 3.4% rise from the previous year. I think something that's really important to look at is not just the price of the home, but how it relates in affordability. We used federal standards for our down payment interest rates and how we were calculating this. And from those calculations, we can see that the average home in Wilsonville costs about 18% more than what we would consider the average household in Wilsonville, which we're determining based on median income. And you can see that depicted here, that the affordable home price, while at one point were pretty similar to what people could afford, it has continued to sort of gap over the years.
Hey, Georgia, can you scroll back up to that one real quick? I just wanted to take a look.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We did a little bit of calculation based on mortgage payments as well to see what that looks like. And the monthly mortgage payment for a median, or sorry, for a home with the median price would be about 41% of the average households, the average household in Wilsonville's median income, which is pretty significant. And the standard we typically use to determine affordability would be 30% or more of your income. So it's a whole 11% above that standard. This is just another way to really look at how median home price and median home value, or sorry, median income and median home value have changed over the years in relation to each other. We can see that while home price has increased significantly about $170,000, income has not increased quite like that. And you, I mean, you wouldn't expect it quite significant, but it's not going at the same rate, which you can see here. So while median sale price is skyrocketing or going up, you can see that median income is actually trending down with a bit of an odd one happening in 2018 where they switched. So what does this mean? I mean, there's a lot that we can, a lot of different factors contribute to what affordability looks like in Wilsonville. But a lot of what we're seeing is that Wilsonville residents are earning more money and/or their higher-income households are replacing lower-income households that are moving out of Wilsonville because they can no longer afford to live there. The data that we have and the different, the study that we've done can't necessarily determine this for a fact, but these are just the trends we're seeing that we believe with the more statistically rigorous study you may have a little more information on. So we looked at what it would cost to own a home, but we can now look at what the cost of renting a home would be, which typically a lot of people think of as the more affordable option. So we looked at it both in all rental units, and then we separated it in apartment-style rental units or what you might typically think of as a multifamily rental unit. Between 2018 and 2019, the median price increased really dramatically by 11%. And then breaking it down by affordability, the median income of renters is a whole 21% less than that of the median income of households in Wilsonville. So we factored that in as we looked into this. And as a result, the current median rent price for multifamily units is 27% higher than what is affordable for the typical renter in Wilsonville. And if you remember from previously, for a homeowner in Wilsonville, the cost is about 18% more than what they can handle or what they could reasonably afford. And for renters, it's about 27% higher than what they could reasonably afford. We can also see, I mean, it's important to look at the fact that this does include our subsidized housing as well. But when we're looking at income, the median income for renters is almost half that of the median income of homeowners. Here, we're looking at affordability again, and we have three different lines on this graph. This represents what the median rent price is for all homes. So that's including, you know, single-family homes as well as multifamily. This is the median rent price that we're looking at for multifamily style. And then here is what the affordable median rent is. And we can see the affordable median rent is well below both of those price points. So when we're looking at cost burden, about 90% of households in Wilsonville earning below $20,000 a year are experiencing the cost burden of housing, they're burdened by housing. And then if we look at the next group, which is of all the households earning $50,000 or less, it's still 80% of them are experiencing this burden on them for housing. And when you look at then people earning 50%, or sorry, $50,000 or more, that changes to only 35% of households have this rent burden or this burden of 30% of the cost of housing. So it's a pretty significant shift there of actually a 45% difference just going up in that income level. And when it comes to affordability, it's great to look at what kind of houses we have, both in terms of the type of housing, which we've discussed a little bit, and also what's in the housing compared to households and what, how many people are in households versus what the houses look like and how many people they can accommodate. So using some data from the American Community Survey, we looked at household size versus the number of bedrooms in households as a way to look at are the homes we have right now meeting the people in Wilsonville's needs? And we found that there's been an increase in, you know, two-to-three-person households and that the largest percent of households in Wilsonville are between two to four people. So that, and we also see that two-to-three-bedroom homes accommodate about, or make up about 65% of Wilsonville's housing stock. And so that really shows that we have a pretty nice fit for what we currently have household size-wise in Wilsonville. However, if you look at it a little bit differently, we know that not every person in a household always needs their own bedroom. So potentially, even though we have a lot of the increase of two-to-four-person households, there's still the potential for smaller-bedroom homes. But even with this trend, we're seeing actually an increase in homes with more bedrooms. And here, we're looking at it by housing type. We can see there's a really great mix already, which hopefully will continue to improve as we implement House Bill 2001. And at this current moment, about 45% of Wilsonville's housing are apartment-style multifamily. 40% is single-family detached. We have 7% or so is single-family attached. And I think some other things that are kind of worthwhile noting would be our duplexes as well as our mobile homes and condos. We have a pretty large percentage of condos for a town our size. And so we looked at affordability in Wilsonville. And I think it's really important to zoom out and look at the regional context as well because affordability is not just a Wilsonville problem. When we look at these statistics, it's really a problem across the metro and across the country. So here, I took some of our cohorts or neighboring cities and looked at what the median home value was. And as you can see, we have Wilsonville here, and it really does line up with the other cities pretty well. And so when we're looking at all the trends I spoke about, Wilsonville is not necessarily the most affordable-looking community as we go through that. But we can see we really match with our cohorts, which just further emphasizes that this is a problem we have to deal with regionally. And we also, I did a similar thing with rent burden. And we can see Wilsonville here actually has the lowest percentage of our population that is rent burdened. But it's still 43%, and we only beat out Sherwood by about 2%. So again, it's clear that there is, there is a regional issue with housing affordability. Then looking here, we're just doing some more comparing with our cohorts. And Wilsonville has grown significantly faster than some of our cohorts in recent years. Here, we're looking at annual population growth, with some peaks in 2016 was definitely the highest. And then here, we're looking at growth in housing units. And once again, Wilsonville has been having really consistent and high growth in comparison to our neighboring cities. Finally, as we look forward, we're going to talk about the metro housing growth forecast. So this was an analysis done back in 2014 about what housing will look like in the future for cities across the region. When Metro was looking at Wilsonville, they forecasted 20 years into the future to see how many households or how many homes they would think we would build between now and 2034. At our current rate, we have already built 45% of the households they predicted we would build in the next 20 years. So of those six years, we've already got 45% of what they were expecting. They also did analysis based on how much buildable land we have remaining. And during this analysis, they based it off of what we had in 2014 within our urban growth boundary. And we have already used 38.1% of that land. However, since this initial report was done, we've actually added some area into our UGV. And we've only used 24.2% when you adjust the numbers to reflect that. So what does equitable housing in Wilsonville look like and where can we go forward in the future with it? As we saw, it's an issue in the region, but, and different issue, or different factors will influence the local housing market. But Wilsonville is working very hard to create a path towards more affordable housing, both by implementing House Bill 2001 and with the spearheading of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan in this past year. The implementation of House Bill 2001, like I referenced a few times earlier on, is hoping to continue to support a mix of housing with duplexes, attached single-family homes, and just create the opportunity for more types of housing and then hopefully provide more market-rate affordable housing choices. The Equitable Housing Strategic Plan outlines a strategy to create opportunities, not just for homeownership, but also trying to create opportunities for more affordable rental, having to, or aging in place, and other things that people in Wilsonville need for their housing. We hope that these efforts combined will help reduce this gap that we've seen increasing over the years and stand try to bring the affordability back to what we actually have in actual housing prices. So we end this on a little bit of a question. I went through and I talked a lot about the trends that we've looked at over the last six years and what we think that might mean for our future. But as you guys know, and everyone knows, there are a lot of different factors that affect housing, a lot of different factors that will affect our growth rate outside of what's happening in Wilsonville. And one of those things was the COVID-19 was first detected in the end of 2019. And by March of 2020, I think it was pretty clear to most of the world that this was going to have a major impact on everyone. And we don't know at this time how this may affect our housing growth or our population growth. But what we do know is that Wilsonville is very supportive of its residents and is committed to continue to support them through this. In April, we put together a small business grant relief program. And through that, we were able to support a lot of small businesses. We also are continuing to enable a variety of housing options, hopefully in Frog Pond and Town Center infill. The Equitable Housing Strategic Plan responds to a lot of the needs as they emerge. Wilsonville remains a resilient community with a thoughtful, forward-looking approach to growth and sustainability, which will enable us to weather this storm and look to a brighter future together. Thank you, guys. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Miller, let's start with you.
Wow. I'm not sure if I really have any questions. So in line with what we have, we were presenting to Metro about our plans, does this information show that we're actually meeting our goals? That's sort of what I'm taking from this, that we're actually meeting our goals? Is that, is that a true statement?
Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director with the city. I'll go ahead and take this one. The urban growth report that Metro publishes isn't necessarily goal-based. So it doesn't necessarily go forth and set goals for cities and a growth rate goal for them. It's much more market-based and looking at potential demand. And part of that is based on the supply of land and the zoning of that land, but also on a number of economic factors that are integrated into their model. And so this really is looking more toward what they anticipate as the demand. So that's the requirement at the state level for the regional government, which is to look at every six years. look at every six years at what the twenty-year growth rate is likely to be, what the demand is for both residential and employment land. So that's what these, that's where these numbers come from. So when they put that urban growth report together, they estimated that the city would grow, I believe, at three-point-eight percent. No, less than that. It was like one point, that's how many were permitted in this last year. I think there, and if I remember correctly, it was one-point-eight percent or something like that. And the city has consistently grown at a faster rate than that, even prior to the publishing of that in 2014. And so that was part of, that was one of many reasons why the city considered looking at the housing report and better tracking what our growth rates look like to help inform future urban growth report discussions with Metro.
Thank you. Yeah, a little clarification there in my brain. One of the things is, I guess, looking at this is that when we were doing some of the planning for Frog Pond, it was to continue to reflect this variety of housing and variety of price points. And I'm just wondering if it, based on what we're seeing here, we were accurate in that in terms of meeting more, not single-family homes, but more multifamily homes or attached homes, there's some other varieties of properties?
Yeah, I think that it's hard to necessarily assess where the demand level is for some of those things before you see really the market reactions to it. Right now, what we're seeing is the mix we have is what market demands essentially. I think that for Frog Pond, you're right, we're not entirely sure how it will form, especially with the implementation of House Bill 2001. I think we'll see, we'll see really what demand is and how that market will affect how Frog Pond sort of develops.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing else.
Commissioner Greenfield?
Nothing special at this time. These are issues that we're going to look at in great detail as we move forward with master planning Frog Pond East. I am somewhat encouraged that we're, we seem to be ahead of the curve for the whole metro region, and that's a good thing. Clearly, there's more that we can do in terms of affordability, but there's a burden, a larger burden, it seems to me, on some of our surrounding, our neighboring communities who have a much bigger gap than we have. I think that we are probably on a good track, and I don't think that we need to, we need to, we don't need to outstrip our neighboring communities in building low-cost housing. I think that we need to be reasonable going forward, and we need to keep in mind the commitment that we did affirm back when we were doing master planning or area planning for the whole Frog Pond area, that we were temporarily going to tip the balance toward higher income and higher-cost building in Frog Pond West with the anticipation that there would be more affordable and multifamily options available in Frog Pond East. We need to remember that we're doing that. We've already committed ourselves to that, I think.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, you know, this clearly shows that the equitable housing plan is greatly needed. And as was previously said, the Frog Pond East area looks like that was the primary area for a lot of this affordable housing. Outside of that, I mean, you know, it's interesting to see, and it goes right along with what we've seen in a lot of the equitable housing information we've been presented, that Wilsonville definitely needs affordable housing, that a lot of people that, you know, are paying, that are renters could afford. But outside of that, this, this report, I'd like to commend the group that did this because it's really clarifying where we're at, where the city has grown and housing has grown, and this is a good report. So I don't, I don't have anything else to add to this, except to say that it certainly shows that we're on the right track in direction with our equitable housing plan. That's it for me, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Willard?
Yeah, I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Everly?
Sure, yeah. One question that I have, and then maybe a comment if I still am feisty enough for it. Looking at the cohort data, it jumped out to me that West Lynn is missing from that data. Is there a reason why all of the other surrounding cities were included but West Lynn was not?
There's not necessarily a specific reason why, other than these cities, it can get overwhelming the more cities you have to compare, but if you feel that West Lynn is a great example or one that we should have, I think it would make sense to include in the future.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, given that we do have a shared school district with them, it would be nice to see that, that data.
And as our immediate neighbor, I think they're very relevant.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, I want to reiterate the comment from the previous commissioners, you know, it's a well-done report. You know, to me, this is really highlighted, you know, a little obvious before, but this is really a regional problem. And, you know, my biggest frustrations lie in, in what appears to be the inability to solve this at a regional level. And, you know, I'm hopeful that our equitable housing strategic plan can, can do good. My concern is that if we don't solve it at the regional level, our impact is going to be limited. So thank you for the report. Excellent work, as always, by the city staff.
I'd like to add a postscript, if I could, to mine.
Go ahead.
I think that it's important for us to note at this time, at this point, and to keep in mind as we go forward, that quality of the housing in Wilsonville is going, it needs to be protected, needs to be paramount in our thinking and our planning. We need to be known not as the low-income community, but the well-designed and well-built community in whatever kinds of housing we develop.
Thank you for that comment. True affordable housing is well-designed affordable housing because, you know, to push the, to the logical extreme, you can issue everybody a refrigerator box and say that's your housing. That's going to increase their inequity and increase their actually cost for shelter. Well-designed housing is an important element of affordability in whatever we do in our equity, in our strategic housing. But the points that are being made are important in that you have to take the region into account, and I believe that's why the state decided to pass the state housing laws that they have, and as these get implemented, we're going to start seeing, I think, the dynamics change a little bit, or at least that's my hope. Any last remarks? Thank you very much for the presentation. A very well-done report, this, the housing report ends up every year improving on its previous years. I'm not dissing Miranda, who was doing this before.
Thank you.
Very good. So the city council action minutes were not included because the city council meeting was canceled. And we have an updated planning commission work program that was included. So you can see that some of the stuff that we were promised in the presentations coming up at the next meeting are indeed listed in that table. If you have any questions about it from Miranda, this would be a good time to ask.
I have a question about the city council.
Go ahead.
At our last meeting, we recommended that city council, a proposal to create a committee on equity and inclusion. I'm wondering whether any progress, excuse me, any progress has been made in that direction?
Thank you, Commissioner Greenfield. Yes, city staff has met internally with legal and planning have met, and we've also met with the city manager's office to discuss the recommendation and the idea that came out of your hearing. That information is, as we stated at that last meeting, is essentially going to be enveloped within a whereas clause in the resolution that is drafted for council's consideration and is also being highlighted in their staff report, as well as the presentation staff will give them in both work session and the hearing. The hearing is scheduled for Monday, this coming June fifteenth, Monday, and they'll be considering that item. And so there is likely going to be discussion at that meeting and whether or not that will sort of be addressed within whatever decision they make, or whether it'll be something that comes back for further discussion.
Excellent.
Very good. The commissioners who had particular kind of concerns about that while we were discussing the strategic plan were Commissioner Mellon and Willard. Is the response that you got from Miranda satisfactory? Do you have any additional questions about it or remarks?
This is Commissioner Mellon. No, that's, that's fine. We'll see what, what the city council comes out with after that, and then, you know, we'll, we'll take it from there. That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no further comment here. Thanks.
Very good, very good. That is the item. Unless there is any other issue or question, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Chair Mesba, if I could, I'd like to highlight just a couple more items, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
Great. As I noted again, this is Miranda Bates Shaw, Planning Director with the city. One announcement I would like to make is another item that will be before the city council on Monday. I think that you will be all interested to know that just over the last couple weeks, the planning division has received notice that we have received three different grants that total over half a million dollars. So the planning division will be receiving about five-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars that will help us to pay for the master planning of Frog Pond East and South. It will also help us to conduct the work, the majority of the funding we needed, not all of it, but a significant portion of the funding we needed to cover the costs of House Bill 2001 implementation. And then that also includes an additional grant that we received to conduct additional outreach to communities typically under-engaged in our efforts, particularly as they relate to housing and housing needs moving forward. And so as you noted, know very well, the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan noted that we'll have a significant increase in the Latinx demographic, and that's often a population that is less involved in our projects and in decision-making in the city. And so that project's a really interesting one because it helps us to engage with both the House Bill 2001 implementation, as well as the Frog Pond master planning on specific housing issues. But it also sets up a framework for how to empower and involve the community long-term in decision-making in Wilsonville that would expand beyond just planning projects or just housing projects. So we'll be looking to actually partner and contract with a community-based organization who will help us lead that effort and set up a framework. So the planning division is pretty excited. We have a pretty ambitious work program around housing that we'll be working on over the next few years, but as you can see, as reported to you tonight, there's a lot of work that continues and is needed. So we're really looking forward to that. And if you get a chance, congratulate any of the planners that you see, and in particular, Dan Pauly, who authored all three grant requests, and we can thank him for the extra effort on that one. So exciting news that I thought you might all want to hear about.
Kudos to the planning team.
Excellent.
Yeah, hear, hear.
Hear, hear, yes.
And then the la, oh, sorry, what, chair?
Keep Dan Pauly on staff.
And then the last thing I would just like to finish with is my gratitude for all of You know, I know tonight there was an event that occurred prior to coming in here that I know many of you either participated in or would like to have participated in more, but had this commitment on your calendar. And all of you showed up this evening and served your community in the way that you all do, and I'm very grateful for that. I know these decisions are hard, and this was just one example. And it made me think of all the times that you are probably torn between different ways that you want to serve your community and different ways that you want to provide leadership within the place that you live. And I just want you to know that it does not go unnoticed and that I am entirely grateful for the support that you give to this city organization and to my planning staff and the staff of community development. So thank you.
Amanda, I want to thank you for acknowledging that because you're correct. Several of us either partially attended that event. Thank you for acknowledging that. It means a lot.
Yeah, I'm the one who wanted to and didn't dare to because I figured I would get stuck in traffic and never make a jump. The, on another issue, Miranda, the grants that you mentioned and the outreach effort to some of the populations that are not as involved. One of the roles that I was hoping this new committee or commission on equity and inclusiveness would undertake is an ongoing dialogue like that within the community. If we are going to address the issues that keep coming up on specific projects when bush comes to shove, we need to have started that kind of dialogue and familiarizing ourselves with the issues that the community as a whole sees and a conversation so that some of these issues can be addressed, so that, you know, I'm not only showing up at the planning commission representing my own self-interest, but really the interest of the whole community. This needs to be a discourse to create a common vision and solution as a community. So I'm happy that you got a grant to start that with some of these populations that are participating, but I'm hoping that that will be a foundation to kind of expand it on a full-time basis as an ongoing dialogue in the community.
That's why this committee needs to be ongoing and not a, not a task force.
Right.
Right, and I, I see library weekly talks by different speakers on different subjects. For example, it's one of the things that they do as an outreach and education effort of this new committee. Those kinds of ongoing things is what I was hoping would create the kind of conversation in the community that will preempt the oppositional and positional issues that come up when decisions have to be made.
Thank you for that.
And thank staff, by the way. You think you, almost at every meeting, you thank us for our participation and work. For myself, I can tell you that I'm pretty thankful for the excellent job that staff does, and the hours that I spend are happily volunteered.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other remarks, now we can entertain a motion for the ending of. If there aren't any other remarks, now we can entertain a motion for ending our meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
If you have seconded, and anybody opposed any conversation? Very good. The meeting is adjourned at 8:31.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.